I'd like to call this board meeting to order and welcome everyone here and appreciate you coming out. And ask you to make sure you have your cell phones silenced. And first thing on the agenda tonight is a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Let's have the graduate allegiance.
Graduate allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the approval of the agenda. Anyone have any changes?
Mr. Chair, I think originally nine A was a presentation for the sheriff's office. I understand that's been postponed. Other than that, I'm not aware of any. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think Mr. Sharp made the motion. And he gave the second.
No.
Oh. Bob.
I hit the button first.
We need buttons up there where they light up and then we'll know who. Next, we have a citizen's comment period. I don't have anyone signed up. Is it anyone here that has anything they want to talk about or say anything? Hearing none, close the citizen comment period. Next, we have a consent agenda. Turn that over to Mr. Hiss.
All right, we only have one item this evening on the consent agenda. And that is a resolution approving the submission, acceptance, and appropriation of a $35,016 state homeland security program grant from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. And this is for the fire and EMS department.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Parker, second by Mrs. Bainsley, Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. Any changes or questions on the minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the amendments.
Second. Mr. Johnson made the motion to approve the amendments. And Mr. Tuck, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a public hearing presentation recognizing Dr. Cohen, M.D., for providing excellent emergency medical care. That'll be presented by Mr. Johnson.
Could you come on up, please? I guess I could have come back there, couldn't I? How you doing? Doing fine.
This is a resolution recognizing Dr. Leonard Cohen, M.D., OMD, for providing excellence in emergency medical care. Whereas the operational medical director for Bedford County Emergency Services plays a vital role in ensuring the delivery of highest quality emergency medical care throughout Bedford County. And whereas the OMD provides essential medical oversight, guidance, and education to the men and women who serve in Bedford County Fire and Rescue System, ensuring that patient care is delivered in accordance with the highest medical standards and best practices. And whereas throughout his commitment, professionalism, and leadership, Dr. Leonard Cohen has served as the OMD, strengthening the clinical foundation of our emergency medical system and enhancing the safety readiness and effectiveness of our EMS providers. And whereas Dr. Cohen has devoted countless hours to improving patient outcomes, reviewing protocols, providing physician consultations, and supporting training programs that maintain our department's excellence in pre-hospital emergency care. And whereas Bedford County recognizes that the continued success of our EMS system depends upon dedicated partnerships between our medical directors, our emergency responders, and our community. Now, therefore be it resolved that Bedford County Board of Supervisors and the Bedford County Fire and Rescue Department hereby express their sincere gratitude and recognition to Dr. Leonard Cohen, Operational Medical Director for providing 40 years of excellence in emergency medical care with distinguished service, leadership, and dedication to the citizens and providers of Bedford County. Thank you.
Won't you have the chief and the pen?
We will.
You want to have the Bedford County in the background?
Wait, 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 wait. Wait.
I'm gonna go really up to try to get some of the desk out of here, okay? It's gone all the way up here. Ready? Look up here. One, two, three. Okay. Need anymore? Good. Thank you, Senator.
I was blinking. We could go out in a breezeway.
Go out into the byway and tell them to come in.
Yep, just six minutes is shot. Today. Vakina might break my three-minute breakfast. End of start quarantine. All right, thank you. Next, we have a consideration of resolution authorized in county administrator to execute a contract professional architectural and engineering services related to Independent Park on improvements. And that will be presented by Stuart Saunders.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So, yes, so we're coming to you this evening. This is a project presenting on an overview of the proposed improvements to the ponds at Independent Park. This project is being supported by Virginia A&amp;E with Hurt and Profit as the primary consultant. Project overview, Independent Park contains two ponds constructed in around 2000 and 2008. Over the past two decades, both ponds, especially the upper pond, have experienced sediment buildup. Tree growth on the embankments has become a concern for the integrity and lifespan of these structures. So I just wanted to give you a visual. The top picture shows the two ponds, upper pond being, I don't know if you guys can see my cursor. If you can't, up to the right there with the lower pond there. Also, the smaller picture here, I would just kind of give an overview. You can see our ponds and our park right there with the runoff potentially is coming from some of this area behind Walmart there that's, leads up to the park. So I just wanted to give you an idea of that as well. Project objectives, our goals are focused on restoring the ponds, improving water quality, and ensuring long-term sustainability. Dredging is needed to regain capacity lost to sediment accumulation. We also need to enhance stormwater and dam performance through added infrastructure such as new emergencies, such as a new emergency spillway. Addressing vegetation management will protect the dams and prolong their life as well. Proposed improvements, CCTV inspection will give us a detailed assessment of the existing pipes and riser structure. That's essentially, it uses a high-resolution camera on a cable to view the inside of the pipe in the sewer or drain without having to do any excavation. The dredging will remove decades of accumulated sediment. A new forbay will help us capture sediment before it enters the main pond, reducing future maintenance. Tree clearing on the embankments is necessary to maintain dam integrity. And a designed emergency spillway will bring the upper pond up to modern standards for handling major storm events. This next slide will kind of show you some of those major storm events. This was taken back in actually June of 2020 after one of those main heavy rain events that we sustained there. You can see the upper pond running down into the lower pond there as well. Scope of services, this is a comprehensive engineering project involving surveys, environmental review, construction design, and compliance documentation. Hurt and Profit will generate all construction drawings, grading, and drainage plans, and erosion and sediment control plans. These services ensure the county receives high-quality, full-compliant, construction-ready documents. Environmental compliance, because this is a water body project, we must work with DEQ and the Army Corps of Engineers. Wetlands and jurisdictional waters must be delineated and reviewed. A joint permit application is due to dredging and forbay construction. Sediment testing is required to determine proper handling and disposable methods. Cost summary, the total of the professional service proposal is $96,830. This includes all surveys permitting construction plan development, environmental compliance, and closeout conditions. The proposal is broken down into task-based costs, ensuring transparency, accountability across each stage. Again, the anticipated outcomes, these improvements will restore the pond's function and enhance long-term environmental quality. Forbay will reduce future sedimentation and lower maintenance cost. Improved stormwater and spillway design reduces risk during major rain events. Tree clearing and dam improvements will extend the longevity of both ponds. As we stated earlier, the recommendation would be to approve the proposal from Virginia A&amp;E and Hurt and Profit. And the approval will allow us to begin the necessary assessment and design work. And that's all I have. And so they open the floor up to any questions that the board might have.
When you dredge it, can I get my disc?
We used to do that quite often. We had a Ben at the office for lost disc where folks could come in and get that, actually. So, yeah, yeah, we've done that before, certainly. Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, does the pond get used for anything, like swimming, or boating, or kayaking?
No, so it's not allowed. We do have fishing over there. Of course, it's catch and release, but we do not allow swimming, or boating, or anything like that in those ponds.
Why not?
It's just safety. It's just not something that we allow over there. Yep. Okay. Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
No discussion? Any one want to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution R. 111825-04.
Hold a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Sharp, Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Sharp.
Yes.
Ms. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a consideration of a resolution approving the purchase of two new ambulances for use by party lifesaving crew and Montvale Rescue Squad. That will be presented by Chief Blackenshaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'll start off by saying, the first part of this year, the board approved a apparatus replacement plan for ambulances with, for our volunteer agencies also. Staff worked countless hours looking at three different quotes from three different vendors on the ambulances. And of course, we came down to the Wheel Coach ambulance. I will say that after all the initial work was done and the specs of the ambulances, we did meet with the two agencies that were due to get this apparatus. And it was great working with the two agencies to come upon a final solution. And I will say, in this, one of the things is that, you know, we were, we talked about, and of course, that the apparatus would be 100% county-owned. It will be an 18- to 24-month timeframe before the ambulance would be delivered. And of course, also, if at any point in time any services needed to change within the volunteer department, the ambulances could be replaced or, you know, put at another location wherever services would be needed. So that is in there. And of course, both entities totally understood and agreed. And we worked together as a team to get that accomplished. So there will be a purchase, what we're wanting is to purchase the two ambulances from Wheel Coach that came in at $380,000, $380,000 and $295,000. Of course, with buying two at the time, we did get a $4,000 discount, which the total amount for the two will be $756,590. And I'll be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chair.
I know it's a little bit late now to be asking this question, but just, I may have mentioned it before, but I understand there's at least one agency that, and it may not be possible to have done it in this case, but one agency in Bedford County actually buys chassis when necessary and puts their box on that. Is that something that you guys thought about doing, or could have done possibly?
We have done this in the past for our own fleet. Currently, at this time, we went with looking at all vendors across the board. I will know the most recent time that we even bought career staff ambulances, that we had difficulty getting chassis. So therefore, these chassis are ready to go. And therefore, being the timeframe that we can get it and make sure that we get it in a reasonable timeframe, it just seemed like all-out right opportunity in time to get that done. But totally understood, yes, we do look at that when at all possible.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Any discussion amongst the board? Have a motion.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, I move that we approve Resolution R. 111825-02.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mrs. Parker, Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Tuck.
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley.
Yes.
Mrs. Parker.
Yes.
Ms. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a board committee. No reports, board comments, no comments.
Mr. Chairman, I would come in.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remind everybody, attendants here in the board, if you're so moved to be there, this Saturday morning at 11 o'clock in front of the courthouse will be the dedication of the Bedford Vietnam War Memorial. And you're all invited.
They're gonna close the street off?
Yep.
And anyone else? Okay, Mr. Hiss.
All right, I do have two things. I'll make them, try to make them quick. Last week, we received notice from Senator Mark Warner's office of a $1 million USDA rural facilities grant. And that is for improvements to the old Montvale School. And just a couple of things I wanted to mention about that was, in particular, the staff member for Senator Warner's office, Isaac Sarver, was critical in pointing us in this direction about three years ago. He and Mr. John Putney were talking about the Congressional Direct Spending Program. And he was, Mr. Sarver was asking, hey, there's other localities that participate in this. We've never had a request from Bedford County. Is, do you all have a project that you may want to pursue? So John Putney and I put our heads together, and we all thought that the Montvale School would be a good project because without a significant slug of funding, that project wasn't going to go very far without some grant funding. So anyways, we put that grant in. The Central Virginia Planning District Commission was instrumental in the first draft of that grant. It didn't get approved the first time, but we put it in, put the grant in again. And John Putney and myself updated the grant and put it in a second time. And it got awarded. So that is a great thing for the, for that project. You know, there's been a lot of people that have been part of this project. Doug Kaufman, our Public Works Director, has been helpful with Montvale School for a while. Supervisor Bob Davis has been a big supporter of this project. The Montvale Preservation Foundation, a couple, there's several people who have been involved. The two that certainly rise to the top of that effort are Ronnie Sutton and Jimmy Robertson. And we've had assistance from David Hill, from Hill Studios Architects, and Ron Oak, who's really been doing work for free for a number of years. He's been very helpful in terms of putting the grant application together. So anyways, thanks to really everybody who's just worked collaboratively on this for about three years now in order to get this funding. And of course, thanks to Senator Warner. Also, Congressman Morgan Griffith has been very supportive of this. And, which by the way, he has a grant that he's been working with, with BRWA, for a $1.3 million sewer replacement project in the Western Hills subdivision, right in Bedford. And that grant project's still alive in the House. And we'll just have to see what happens. We'll see what happens with future appropriations over the next few weeks with that. But it's still out there as a possibility, too. So anyways, a couple, Montvale School grant was a great win for that project. And of course, we won't be able to really do much work on that for a couple of months until we get notice from USDA in order to do that. The second thing I had was just a quick recognition for our own Social Service Director, Andy Crawford. He was awarded the Outstanding Local Leadership Award by the Virginia League of Social Services. A much deserved award. I think everybody enjoys working with Andy. This was in recognition of that, for his exemplary leadership, communication, collaboration, and support in, across agencies across the state. In particular, and lately in this situation, that really... In particular, and lately in this situation, that really led to this award was that there's been some recent director, DSS director challenges, if that's the right word for it, in some of our, some regional, regional counties in the area. And Mr. Crawford has spent a lot of time on his own, but also, his leadership staff have helped those counties during those periods of transition, offering their support and expertise in order to keep their DSS offices functioning in a productive manner. And, you know, that's going way above and beyond while he's also taking care of business here in Bedford County. So, anyways, it's just a well-deserved recognition for Andy, so if you see him around, feel free to congratulate him. So, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chris. You mentioned the Fayokee Weekend.
I can't.
It's not necessary.
Okay.
Mr. Scully.
Nothing for me at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Mr. Chair, may I just mention one thing quick? I'd also like to mention Bob Carnes and Betty Carter, who not only helped me win my election in 2019, but they were the original impetus to get the Montvale School saved, and I think we'd be remiss tonight if we didn't mention Bob Carnes and Betty Carter for all they did for the Montvale School as well, because they really got the ball rolling initially.
Have a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.